Can I help you something?
I'm just going in. What's going on now? I can't get to go in.
Okay, where you trying to go?
Um, I'm actually here to see the, I'm actually here to do a thing with George Blakemore.
Hey, hey, come on.
Wait, wait. Excuse me. What, why did you ask me that?
Why'd I ask you what?
What was I going on?
I just wanted to know was you trying to cut through or was you trying to get on the elevator? Where, where, where you going?
So I wonder if the sensation of lit-
I'm, I wanna go to the meeting that's going on now. The meeting that starts at eleven.
No, I'm, I'm filming y'all harassing them. I want, yeah, I should be, I'm, I'm, hopefully I'm gonna go, oh yeah, I'm gonna go with them. Mister-
Get your, stick down away from me.
Mister Blakemore, how you doing today?
How are you?
I'm alright.
I wanna go to the one at eleven.
Over here, sir.
At eleven o'clock.
Are you with him?
I'm just filming him, that's all.
Sorry, do you wanna, you wanna go up through?
Speak with this guy. How's it going?
I wanna go to the goddamn meeting that started at eleven.
Mister Blakemore, um-
I want the meeting started at eleven. I wanna go there.
So this is George Blakemore, he, he down here, he been down here most of the day. Um, why did they bring him on this side? Mister Blakemore? Mister Blakemore?
I wanna go to the eleven o'clock meeting.
Mister Blakemore? Why did they bring you, why they bring you on this side? Why did they bring you on this side?
I wanna go to the eleven o'clock meeting. I wanna go, wait a minute, let me talk to some motherfuckers down here.
Why did they bring us on this side?
I wanna go to the eleven o'clock meeting.
Why did they bring us on this side?
That's what I wanna know. I wanna go to the eleven o'clock meeting. I wanna go to the eleven o'clock, sir. You're right. I wanna go. The meeting started at eleven. I wanna go.
I wonder why they bring him on this side?
I wanna go to the eleven o'clock meeting.
So this the meeting that's starting at eleven?
Yes, and I wanna go.
What's this meeting about, Mister Blakemore?
It's a city council meeting, young man, and, and we would go up there, they would have your agenda and everything. This meeting's supposed to start at eleven. Why are they denying us from going to the meeting?
Is that a city council meeting?
Why?
Hopefully. I'm, I'm, I'm here.
Could, could you ask me, young man?
I'm hearing black people about black people. What you here for? Take that mask off your face while you talk to me. Now, why you here?
I wanna go to the eleven o'clock meeting.
Okay.
I work for Impact for Equity and we're working for the party. This issue?
The issue of?
Arbitration.
Arbitration for the police? Oh, them making their own decisions. So, oh, this the city council meeting for them, huh?
Yeah.
So the police gonna get to argue over themselves? How fair do you think that is?
Would you say?
How fair do you think that is? Where the police get to make decisions about themselves? The FOP get to make decisions about police misconduct. How fair do you think that is?
Well, I will say this, we are working to make sure that the arbitration is not on the contract. Like, that's what I can say from my own position. I mean, if you look pretty, I cannot, that's serious.
I would, I, I, if, 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 for transparency. But I'm gonna go up there and actually see what's going on. Let's go and see what's going on.
I would say Impact for Equity is for, like, police accountability and transparency. We're a lot around, like, the district council where, uh, our, like, we set up the city district council established. Um, our org position specifically is that if arbitration is over, then it would affect those bodies. Work to go hard and to stop it.
That's true. That's true, um, by delegating the power solely to the FOP, that would execute, that would eliminate any opposition towards being, so we do need this out, we do need this, um-
Yeah, and so our org's position is to not have this.
Come on, we have to, come on, let's go upstairs.
I'm looking open, I'm ready for you guys. Back up, please. Don't cross lines, it's gonna cross the line, right?
Y'all, I thought y'all just put me back here 'cause y'all was putting Mister Blakemore back here.
No, everyone that's going to this side-
Man, I ask you, what time does the meeting start?
What time does the meeting start?
What time does it start?
Everybody after security.
What, what the fuck you talking about?
Back up right.
There's a meeting starting at eleven.
He been, he been here a long time.
Why can't I go up there? Why can't I go up there? What time does it start?
He should be upset. He been there a while, though.
What time, sir, young man, what did she say? Meeting started, what time?
Said it already started, actually.
The meeting already started. Bitch, let me out there. The meeting already started.
Are you vibing from your personal IG from your orgs?
Uh, personal, no, so my name is Taiwan Sims, and I focus on black excellence. I focus on black people, I focus on black people.
Yeah.
It's my sole focus. Equity also, well, equity. Equity is a mother show.
People never seen this, this is about the police department. You were lying.
I'm telling you, the meeting started at eleven. Open it up.
That's cool. What's your IG?
It's no IG, well, my IG is W A R, War Torn Visual. This is a, my name is Taiwan Sims, this is Facebook.
Oh.
Open it up. Them two little twin pussy sex. That's why we disrespect the police. I asked a nice white lady, that's, why can't I go up to the meeting?
The BB going in.
The meeting started at eleven. I want to go.
Okay, I've, um-
I'm talking about they not ready.
So wait, with the arbitration, how long have you been following?
The meeting started, well, you personized the white talk.
Uh, arbitration has been going on, like, the contract?
A problem.
Uh, sorry, it began in the contract.
We're not gonna allow larger bags up there.
What'd you say?
We're not gonna allow larger bags up there.
Oh, this is a camera.
Okay. Is there a, um-
Um, so, this is-
So, look, everything-
Listen to her.
The start of the contract negotiation started on the summer, I believe, August. And, uh, don't quote me on that because I just started my job four months ago. So I've only been on this issue for four months. So, what I've known about the process is, uh, initially, I went to work for developments, for committee. And then I went to city council, and then I went back to work for developments, and I was going to city council.
We just-
I've lost, have been other than city council. That's how it's been moving for city council.
Okay, give a brief, give a brief, like, synopsis on what arbitration is, and how it would affect the community if it was allowed.
Yeah.
The meeting started at eleven. She won't let me and the other people up.
Um-
Why? Why? Because she bitch. What, because she-
The arbitration contract is gonna be multineural. Um, I think it's gonna be, uh-
Me and bitch, and women bitch.
I forget, if it's twenty-five or you're, uh, please don't quote me on exactly.
No, no worries, don't worry.
But the what arbitration is-
She better everybody up, uh-
Is that-
Name one call, they let me out.
For disciplinary cases, there'll be, working with a private arbitration.
I came down here at nine thirty.
Right? Um, instead of-
Why the, why the bitch let you up?
And that is the concern around arbitration.
Why the bitch didn't let you up?
The way it would impact our community, and, uh, um, just communities across Chicago. Is that we not have, like, the public transparency?
You go back in town.
Around, uh, just serious disciplinary cases, right? That affects the government. Right, like-
I just a war driver. I came at nine thirty, and the bitch still got me out.
And it would just take us back on, like, some of the recent things that we've done around pushing for good transparency. Specifically around, you know, making sure that-
Are you in line?
You asked me why?
Are you coming in or not?
Yeah, just making sure that, you know, um-
Come on, mister.
You're not in line. I don't know what to do.
I want that damn lady, I want, open it up.
We gotta, we just gonna come through here.
Let it up here.
Yeah, and so-
Alright, young ladies, I mean, y'all watch, we gonna-
Mr. B just bust y'all balls. We gotta bust y'all balls. We gotta, we gotta make y'all job fun for y'all. Come on now. Come on, come on now, cut it out. Y'all don't wanna have no fun today? Y'all could be standing here getting on this elevator, letting people on, come on. Mister B, we going over here? These meetings, um, one at Truman College about the arbitration, this was, and you right, a few months ago. I don't think a lot of people are really aware of what, how this would affect us as a whole, the community. Especially black people, um, there's, there are so many arguments, um, there's so many-
Is there ways that you've been, like, uh, in your life, or, you know, your experience with Chicago, like, have you been impacted in ways?
Yes, personally.
Yeah.
Personally, for the last twenty-some years, personally.
So you, like, it's not the personal impact, it has a community impact, and that is the biggest thing also.
So, so we're gonna be at this, um, and I'm glad I got down here. So this is a follow-up to the arbitration meeting that was held, the one that I made in Truman a few months ago, um-
Do you want me to put this in here?
The concern about the arbitration is that it delegates the power solely to the FOP when dealing with police misconduct. We know that disproportionately, black people, we get fucked by, by this. Um, nobody's gonna wanna, nobody's gonna wanna be like, oh, I'm wrong, I'm wrong, you know, I was wrong, I was wrong. Everybody, so if you got advocates that's not really advocating for justice, then I don't think that works out.
You can walk through.
Okay, thank you. It's the part of the phone.
Uh, no, that's fine. It's just, it's like a jacket. Yep.
Stuff over here.
That was my money clip right there.
Oh, that's your money clip?
No, it's not. It's that, thank you.
Put it inside your bag if you can.
Okay, thank you. It was that guy's, um, money clip. So, and, and so, um, this is gonna be a really important meeting. I'm glad I made this meeting, um, and just actually to see what the decision will be. I know that the city wants total dominance over the people, but this would allow, this would be- Yeah, this would sort of be like that. Go ahead, sweetheart. This would sort of be like that. This would sort of be like a bunch of people having power. This would be giving the FOP basically power over the decisions in which are made when the police are being disciplined for misconduct, for this or that. Let's see what the representation of us is in this room, though. Um, I wonder if Mister Snellin is in this room, Larry. How you doing, sir? How you doing? But there's some people in this room who I want to see. Because the, some, some, some agreements, some conversations we've had that didn't pan out, um, but once again, we come into these spaces, we have to be represented. This argument isn't solely about, uh-
Either way, you just have to see, you can, you have to see the way you choose.
Thank you. Um, front, side? We'll go over here. Thank you, okay, thank you. You shoot, you gonna, you gonna film this? Okay. Okay, we got the mayor in the house. Let me slide in here with, uh, we gonna be companions for the day. And then, cause now-
If you would be interested in telling more of your, like, personal story-
You got a phone?
Yeah, I do. Um, here's my email, but like, yeah, like, feel free to reach out to me.
They said no drinking, yes, sir, he's, he told me, I won't drink it. I won't drink it.
Because, like, yeah, we're trying to get people who are, like, to personal, we're trying to tell them, it's really the personal impact of this.
Mm-hmm.
So I'd love to, like, get.
Go ahead, go ahead. But we won't be able to speak. I'll be right back.
Thank you very much, I'm a clerk.
So, when I talk about, um, representation in the room, I, I, I'm just kinda filming, that's all. Um, representation in the room with us. Because this conversation is solely and is about us, in a lot of ways.
Can I get a motion to approve the remote participation? It's been moved, so they, they had this forum. We have Alders Robinson-
I really enjoy Mister Blakemore, he's about that life.
Mosley, Scott, Cardona, Rita Sanchez, Lawson-
We got Frank Pack. What's his name?
All those in favor will allow the personal participation requested by these Alders, signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say nay, the being of chair. The ayes have been, Madam Clerk, please mark the alders. Um, President has participated remotely for the roll, uh, quorum call.
I hate having to sit down and shoot.
I am the president of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, in the name of liberty, justice, and for all. Please remain steady for our indication-
Liberty and justice for all. That is a statement.
By Alder of the Sixth Ward, William Hall.
Listen, Ariadne. God, we first of all say thank you for this day.
Say that.
God, we thank you that you've given us strength in our bodies. We thank you that you renewed your mercy on this day.
Say that.
And God, as we come into this room and we represent those who are not here, we always remember to keep love on our agenda today.
Say that.
May our differences do not divide us.
Say that.
God, we pray that we discover things that we did not know before.
Say that.
But when it's all said and done, may your will be done, or learned, as it is in heaven. We ask these things in Jesus's name, amen.
Say that, brother.
Thank you.
Say that.
Madam Clerk, please bring the call of today's special meeting.
The following call for special meeting of the city council is filed in my office on Thursday, February eight, at ten thirty-six a.m. The Honorable Members of the City Council is the gentleman head hereby called especially named of the State Council of Chicago. To begin the convene at eleven a.m. on Thursday, February fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. The State Council taking the call from the sole president decided to date and time the next regular meeting of the City Council. For February fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, at seven thirty a.m., for the other persons who have experienced the year, and the drunkest mayor.
Sorry about that, sorry about that. Let me squeeze, let me squeeze right in. So I hate shooting from Sydney, but we have to. I wanna try to get a-
Any good comments that have been submitted will be posted and available for all members of you. First speaker today is Matthew Conti.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council. Conti, I appreciate the opportunity to address you today regarding a crisis, a matter of great concern for our beautiful city. On behalf of the West of the River Coalition, the issue of unholy penthouse encampments, which have become notorious for drug use and distribution along with crimes and those who live in or appear. Has anyone in this assembly been assaulted, beaten, or robbed by pent dwellers? September eleventh, twenty twenty-three, I was assaulted and battered by a panhandler on the public sidewalk. I'm in the street.
Cause he was home.
Trust me, it's back there. My office was robbed, other attorneys have been harassed and assaulted. The list goes on and on. While we understand that our progressive administration is in favor of these encampments as the solution homelessness, it is crucial to acknowledge the negative impact they are having on our community located west of the river, along Lake Street, Milwaukee, and Fulton Street, under the chain bylaws. We ask that you, as the decision makers of our city, explore alternative approaches to prioritize both compassion and policy, and not follow the disastrous policies of cities like Portland, Seattle, and Francisco. I witnessed firsthand drug use distribution of this homeless encampment, and understand, like you do, perpetuate deadly addiction in an unsafe environment
Why do you feel?
with young homeless and those living and working nearby. November tenth, twenty twenty-three, the West of the River Coalition delivered a petition to the Honorable Mayor Brendan Johnson, correspondents, the alchemists in the districts, along with the Chicago Police Department. This petition was signed by over fifteen hundred seriously concerned residents, asking the city to relocate this encampment. On November seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, the Honorable Forty-Second Ward Home of the President, Riley, and Thirty-Fourth Ward, Gordon, and Bill Comley, delivered a letter to the mayor, attaching the document petition which states support it. In response, we received a generic, undated reply done by Deputy Mayor Johnson and Heathwood, that contained no plan of action to resolve this crisis. Should the controversial proposal propose an additional three-and-a-half percent transfer tax on realizing transactions and access to the one million dollars passed in March's referendum, additional relief, be careful for supporting the unholy school. Currently, there is enough third of policy available if these pent dwellers choose to live on city sidewalks, because that's where they have done their illegal business and may find it detrimental of our community.
This dude is crazy.
I challenge each and every one of you to walk north of the Lake Street today, after work. Go west, west of the river, deceive your son, truth, if included.
Mr. Conti, thank you very much for your comments, all of your comments. Our next speaker is Queen Eddy.
We had a few people here in front of us.
My name is Kuna Wesley, and I represent Color Change and the Coalition for Great Accountability and Transparency. We thank you for the December vote to reject arbitration of funds arbitration awards, especially in the space of the police being slowly misdirected. Today, we ask you to uphold the word again. Before your vote today, please consider the following. One, police officers should be held to the highest standards of accountability and transparency, particularly due to their qualifying duty protection, along with the decades of documented abuses that Latinx, Latino, low-income, disabled Chicagoans have faced because of the officer's ability to violate constitutional rights of community.
Say that.
There is great public interest in ensuring that police officers do commit gross misconduct or are totally held accountable, and that gross misconduct is not human or accepted on the floor. Two, Mister Beck committed a fundamental legal error when he refused to consider the profound public interest involved there in moving openly this manner of hearing of the words "police misconduct allegations" away from an independent publicly accountable body with full due process protection over to a closed-door private arbitration process before arbitrage is to have proven track record of protecting officers from this crime. This error violates section fourteen, section eight of the Illinois Public Safety Relation Act. Three, section twelve of the Illinois Union Uniform Arbitration Act requires a reviewing court to vacate arbitration awards if there is evidence of partiality by the arbitrator. There is substantial evidence of partiality in this specific award, which is laid out comprehensively in our written comments. Evidence includes just five accusations that city leaders violated their oath of office to reference the transparency and accountability arguments that were taken into consideration by the council as quote-quote "Chicago's version of the big lie", comparing these legitimate public interest concerns with Trump's assertion that the twenty-twenty elections were rigged. His thrust in imposing sanctions on the city was highlighted in inappropriate predetermination of probably insensitive rules on grievances resulting from the city's legal challenges. His stingling out of the specific member of the public cried flattery for his criticism of this progress decision, which is entirely unnecessary to support the base of his position. His reference to public academic research by highly respected Southern side experts as quote-quote "pure nonsense".
This conversation-
Furthermore, Mister Beck prefers that it be potential liability for rejecting the award as quote-quote "large and especially staggering", giving to right null justification for using such a bland language. Objectively, the number of individual cases to be inspected by the award is not substantial relative to the total number of disciplinary matters resolved by the city. This reference appears directly in sentence to scare the city council of rejecting the award. The city's legal challenge stands with solid legal ground. Protect transparency and accountability in how broad police misconduct is addressed by voting for rejection of arbitration awards and allowing support challenges to this award. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Krista Noel.
Good morning, Coria and City Council members. My name is Krista Noel. I'm with Women's Alliance for the Ten W H B. I'm also a member of the Chicago Alliance Against Racist and Same-族 COVID Pressure. I speak to you from my heart. I have been working against police violence against women since two thousand nine. I'm a survivor myself. I have been going to police board meetings since two thousand nine, too. Because when I was attacked by a police officer, it scared me. So I went to police board meetings because I trusted that the police in Chicago would protect me and help me get over the fact that I had been beaten by a police officer. Since that time, we have fought for Ricky Lloyd, we have fought for Betty Jones, we have fought for many, many women who have been killed by the police. And when I say that we fought, we got before, we spoke before the police board almost every month. Every month. And not only was I able to speak before the police board-
Good morning, good morning, big bro, good morning, good morning, Keith, good morning, good morning, y'all.
killing these women unnecessarily. So, but people, every police officer who wanted to speak was able to speak. It is not an unfair process. Everyone can speak. It's open, it's transparent. There's no reason whatsoever for you to vote against, uh, or vote for arbitration. Okay? We have had, we and this guy, have had some really good arguments, and we have disagreed. He disagrees with the fact that Robert Realmo was fired. I don't. And he was. And that's the way it should be. We should be able to disagree with the police in public in front of a body that is making that decision. There are no reason whatsoever why that should be, um, contained and not allowed for both sides to speak out. And let me say, when it came to Realmo, a lot of police officers spoke out, a lot. They really thought that it was fair for a grandmother to open her door and shot dead by the police. They really thought that. But that's something that we needed to hear. We needed to hear that. I appreciate police officers getting up and saying what they think and their, you know, weird way of justifying killing people. But it was open, and it did what it needed to do. So I beg you, 'cause I don't have any pride when it comes to this. I beg you to vote for the police board to continue its work.
Amen.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Is this-
Good morning, my name is Olaki Jena. I'm a member of the Chicago Alliance Against Racist and Political Oppression, and I'm here to demand the City Council vote no to arbitration. We in the movement know that this attempt to make the most severe cases of police misconduct be heard behind closed doors is an affront to democracy, transparency, and accountability.
Say that.
We know that this attempt at arbitration is a direct response meant to undermine the huge democratic gains we've made in this city with the passage of our Empowering Communities for Public Safety ordinance, which has given people in this city a democratic say on matters of police accountability like never before. Really, arbitration would be a slap in the face to families and loved ones killed and tortured by police and those of us in the movement who've been fighting to stop police crimes for decades. Remember that this is the city of John Verge and his midnight crew and their successor Brian P. Forver, that torture cops who kidnapped young black and brown boys off the streets, boys and girls off the streets, and tortured them into confessing to crimes they did- boys and girls off the streets and tortured them into confessing to crimes they didn't commit. Remember that this is the city where in twenty twelve, CPD Officer Dante Servin murdered Ricky Boyd from hanging out with their friends at a party. Remember that this is the city where in twenty sixteen, CPD Officer Jason Van Dyke shot seventeen-year-old boy LeJuan McDonald sixteen times, twelve of which happened when he was on the ground. And with twenty twenty-three being a year where police in the U.S. killed more people than ever, one thousand two hundred thirty-two people, you can look it up, just three years after people in this city and country hit the streets in record numbers demanding justice for those killed by police, a vote to oppose arbitration is the bare minimum city council can do to show they stand on the side of justice and accountability. So again, I implore city council, oppose arbitration, all power to the people.
All power. All power, let's go.
Our next speaker is Nino Brown.
You got somebody named Nino Brown. Do we got to sign up to speak?
Please, morning. Well, I'm Mr. Nino Brown, a member of the Party for Socialism and Liberation. Also a former teacher and I've lost students to gun violence, friends of family to police violence. This is a struggle that I've been fighting my entire life. The facts are clear. We have needed fundamentally change, fundamental change in how policing is done in the city and in this nation for decades. The working-class people of Chicago are sick and tired of policies that do not work to empower them, but to disempower them. The people of Chicago are tired, especially those of us in the black communities who have been victims of this police state of raids, unlawful stops, excessive use of force, and the list goes on. But let's zoom out here. Officers have killed at least one thousand two hundred and thirty-two people last year, which was the deadliest year for homicides by law enforcement in over a decade. And the vast majority of these people are poor and working-class people. Do the police protect and serve them when they take their lives? What are we talking about today? Arbitration. It's a matter of basic democracy. Should the public have transparency and accountability over the police who have the right to take our lives and our property? But yet on December thirteenth, the city council approved the new, the new police contract, which doubled the annual pay raises for scheduled cops over the next two years. And we know that the police are some of the highest-paid workers in the city and they are supposed to be accountable to the public if they claim to be public service. The police, which don't solve crimes, they respond to it in many ways and end up being criminals themselves as they murder LeJuan McDonald, Adam Toledo and some of the others. And I say, if you want to end the crime, you have to end the causes of crime. Crime is a consequence of a failed social order. If you want a safer Chicago, vote for transparency. The so-called Union of Rankin-Foul Officers, they want to contest firings, long suspensions and pride instead of doing it in public. We intend to continue to push for as many eyes and ears to pay attention to the matter of policing in our city. If United States is rare that a crime report meets the police arresting or assessing who then convicted of a crime. And according to the Chicago reported, the data shows that in reality, about eleven percent of small serious crimes result in arrest and about two percent as a conviction. If I used to teach, if I did my job two percent of the time, I would be fired, I would be held accountable.
That's right.
So no other public technical union has these, these measures in their contracts. The police are not a part of the working class, they are bludgeoned youth against the working class. It's the basic history of Chicago. What they get from arbitration or negotiation with city lawyers can't be overturned by a simple majority of the city council and will probably be three-fifths of all city council members. And that's a result of pro-cop mayors. But that day is ending. It's ending with the movement for police accountability. We hope it ends. With Brendan Johnson and the progressive movement in the city. And I say to you that we demand true accountability now, all power to the people, justice for every single person who's been victimized by police brutality. Don Collins, thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Dave Gelfand.
Nino, how did you get on that list? How did you get on the list to speak?
My name is Dave Gelfand, I serve as both the homeowner and the manager at a hundred and seventy-six unit building located on Quinton between Lake and Fulton. I am reaching out today to express deep concern to myself, the residents, the businesses in our neighborhood regarding the current state of affairs on our block. Having managed the building for seventeen years, I have witnessed concerning escalation of issues in our area. While there have always been homeless people in sporadic crime, the situation has now reached a critical point characterized by rampant gang activity, drug dealing and other criminal behavior. What was once a place the homeless sought shelter has transformed into a dangerous drug encampment. Both with drugs, individuals armed with weapons and responsible for multiple deaths over the past year. The prevalence of gang graffiti and drug marking territories on our buildings and ever-present risk to residents and the businesses have created an untenable situation. Residents have moved out, units listed for sale at an unprecedented rate for this time of year and leases have been broken. Businesses are struggling to survive as patrons point the area out of fear for their safety. The pervasiveness of open needles and open drug market and the sight of individuals overdosing and dying on our sidewalks have been disturbingly common occurrences at all times of the day and night as residents are walking, their dogs, their children and otherwise navigating the neighborhood. When I, while I commend the efforts of Alderman Riley and Alderman Conway and their staff and the residents of the neighborhood concerns through weekly site visits from streets and sanitation, I stand before you today, urging the mayor's office to take decisive action. The current state of affairs is unacceptable and there is a risk every, every day the city fails to act. Let me be clear, our plea for action is not condemnation on homeless. We support efforts to provide resources and assistance to those in need. However, individuals occupying the encampment are not merely homeless. They are drug dealers and addicts who have repeatedly refused offers of housing assistance. It is evident that the current approach is insufficient in addressing the specific issue. The city's policy of enforcing the now-sunseted Bryant Agreement to protect the rights of the unhoused has converted into a barrier for the removal of this drug encampment from the public way. These tent encampments have been largely commandeered by those dealers who have a vested interest in keeping the encampments in place as a thriving market for narcotics, which currently is under the protection of the city. This approach allows predatory criminal abuse by the unhoused population at this location, which now poses a real danger to our protecting the unhoused and in fact, leading into an environment where there's good intent being hijacked by criminal elements that endanger the homeless as well as law-abiding citizens of this neighborhood. We implore the mayor's office to implement immediate measures to address the drug epidemic plaguing our neighborhood.
Mr. Gelfand, thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is David Lincoln.
Hello, Mr. Congressman. My name is Mr. David Lincoln. I just wanted to say a brief, give y'all brief information of who I am. I'm a torturous survivor. I was wrong convicted back in nineteen eighty-two. I was a kid, fifteen years old. I was kidnapped from one project to another project, beaten, tortured, getting sent to the police station. But I say this to say this, most of you aldermen is that, uh, that's here, y'all already know, y'all already know what's going on with this, we put this corrupting police.
That's right.
We got, we got, we got people in jail that be still fighting to get out because of John Burge.
That's right.
Uh, sometimes I don't even like talking about it. You know, I was wrongly convicted, I was trapped. And to something that I did do in this building for the gun, man. This is nineteen eighty-two. I'm a kid, fifty-two years old. I'm fifty-two years old now, just retired from the streets of sanitation. And I ask all the aldermen to do y'all's job. They be getting away with this for years. We still fighting brothers, innocent people in jail right now that be fighting for it right now. I love you all. But I feel that, feel this, uh, we need, we need, when, when, when stuff happen, when people get killed by the Chicago police, everybody want to talk about trash and trash. You know, that's out of it. You know, we need a better, uh, we need a better board and a better. Sometimes I don't even like talking about it, trying to take me all the way back like, like, like it's happening right now.
It is happening right now.
You know, uh, we asking the committee to vote no because it seem like, it seem, uh, serve to protect. They protect themselves and they serve us. And all this killing that's been going on with the Chicago police officers and they getting away with high-rise murder, it don't, it don't make no sense. You, y'all. About this here because I get emotional. But bear with me, also I'm very much proud of Alliance. And also, I'm also a political, a political prisoner.
That's right.
God bless you all.
Our next speaker is Frank Chapman.
Mr. Chapman, you got some explaining to do. We gonna, we gonna hear you out right now though.
David is also a member of the Chicago Alliance Against Racist and Political Oppression. Those are the people that we work with, those have been to our organization. But I'm gonna talk about accomplishments. This, this body, this, this city council, two years ago, voted, if I recall correctly, thirty-three votes for and thirteen votes against Empowering Communities for Public Safety. That was an historic achievement. It was reported in all the major newspapers across the country as a historic achievement. So I'm not just talking about my opinion. Law professors, Chicago, uh, uh, community organizations, everybody, I look, applaud this as, 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 as an advancement. Now, we don't need that undermined. We don't need to take a step backwards. And that's exactly what we can be doing if we go with this arbitration. So I'm gonna encourage all of you to go doing it. Take the stand that you took originally and never the stand to give our people in the community a democratic option to say, who polices, who polices their communities and how their communities police? We voted for transparency. That's why we have a commission now. That's why we have district councils, elected district councils, so that we can be out in the open. No, nobody who's charged with crime is allowed to negotiate in private. So why should a police officer? We need to know what you're doing because Chicago has lived under police stewardies long enough. You cross, there was a gun to get you a red right now in terms of our democratic rights.
I want y'all to look in this room and see these, these people, this is the argument true. However, we have to occupy this room.
I encourage you to vote no on the arbitration. We don't need a secret chamber of justice. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Zoe Lee.
Zoe.
This whole system is rigged, so it really don't matter, but I know you aren't real fond of the police and you're definitely entitled to that because sometimes I'm not either. However, shop slaughter is something that you should not be rid of after the DNC convention. That's probably not gonna make it here because Biden and Harrison are not being back in office unless they find Black American reparations. Shop slaughter helps on the killers of office of president and helps for the white supremacists like Alexander Pogwone, who is currently out of bond and was found in Englewood with a shotgun, three handguns and AR-15s, semi-automatic rifle, hundreds of rounds of ammunition and a hatchet. Since you refuse to put money back in the community, or if you do, it has to do with the illegal immigrants by finding seventeen million to feed them because you go to a black restaurant, you're supposed to be happy. When it's been three to five illegal mass evictions in our community, black families are being evicted every day across the streets at the Daily Center. They can't get any rental assistance, but you're focused on making a promise on ending shop slaughter. Why? So you can use that money to continue to help the illegals in the Latino community? I mean, you're at almost a billion dollars and our community still looks like a war zone. I'm gonna tell you this, these kids are gonna continue to come downtown and that's nowhere and it's gonna get worse because they're gonna join the minisystem and it's gonna be a time because you care nothing about these kids. And I've reached out to a few older people who have left because other than I plan my generational wealth and the wrong black family, I actually have compassion and love children and they are hurting and need attention and money. I'm not sure if you're gonna go back to Jason and Tony and see what the next orders are since you want to be a social media influencer so bad. But I will stop listening to them because Tony used to worry about why people go into the police office and change seats around with no identification or nothing. And Jason doesn't resent anyone but his mother. Instead of making sure Sparks is on a court case to make sure they stay, that I stay out of city council meetings for almost three months, it's a genocide right here in our community. See Sparks, happy Black history.
Happy. Can I get up, man?
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Rhonda Smith.
Hello, my name is Rhonda. She and I are members of the Chicago Alliance Against Racist and Political Oppression. I'm here to ask that you vote no to arbitration. It is not a good thing and we all know it. You all should know it, it's not a good thing. We've got, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna say, for years and years and years, there have been racist police to join the academy. We all know that. When you see police officers, they don't have racist paint across their faces. You don't know, you just see people. You just see people. So when they've been charged, when they do misconduct, it's only right that they be held accountable. We're human, we're human. Every community, everybody in each, in every community, we're human. Police are supposed to serve and protect them. And when they commit misconduct, they should be held accountable. I shouldn't have to keep repeating this. You all should feel this. It's not right. It's not right. We've seen it through the years. We've seen them get awful murdered. I mean, it's on camera. You look at George Floyd, this whole world saw that. And there are so many incidents where this happens. So they should be held accountable. That should go without saying. It should go without saying. We know that police officers are human too and that's why when some of them, by whatever way, are made to become racist, for one, they shouldn't be police officers if they can't be there. And for the other, we know that people have issues. And if you discover, if you really, if they really look at themselves and say, hey, you know, I'm not treating people equally, you know, I'm not doing right, then you should leave. You shouldn't be a police officer. So this is a way that they should be held accountable. The community has spoken. You don't hear it, you hear it from us, we've spoken. So I've got more time to spare. It's wrong. Please vote no to arbitration. We don't want any behind closed doors deals where bad cops get off. Stop, stop covering up for your partner. You know that they're racist and they're doing wrong. Stop covering up.
Our honor, there are no further speakers. Your time has run out.
Thank you very much. Thank you to all our public speakers as sent forth in the letter calling for special meeting, the only item up today.
That's the end of public speaker.
And a vote is an ordinance setting the date and time for the next regular meeting of the city council for February fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, eleven thirty a.m., Alderman Mitchell.
Mr. President, candidate of the ordinance, clerk setting the date and time for the next meeting.
Thank you very much. And a clerk, please read the ordinance.
The next regular meeting of the city council, city of Chicago shall be held on Thursday, February fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, beginning at eleven thirty a.m. In the council chamber on the second floor in City Hall, one twenty-one North and South Street, Chicago, Illinois. Any other ordinance set in date and time in the next regular meeting of the city council is superseded by this ordinance, section two. The ordinance shall take effect at being enforced from here after passage, passage, Gregory Mitchell, Alderman, seventh floor.
Thank you, Alderman Mitchell.
President, I'm in passage.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed signify by saying nay. Any pin of the chair, the ayes have it. Alderman, a motion to reconsider.
Mr. President, motion to reconsider the vote.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say nay. I have the motion failed for the next regular meeting of the city council for February fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, eleven thirty a.m. Instead of February sixteen, twenty twenty-four, ten a.m. The chair recognizes Alderman Cardona.
Mr. President, I would like to be present for quorum.
Please add Alderman Cardona to the quorum roll call. Was Alderman Sixo Lopez also added? The chair recognizes Alderman Sixo Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think I was, I was at it, but just one of my favorites.
Very, very good. Thank you very much. Alderman Mitchell on a motion to adjourn.
President, there being no further business questions, I think that we adjourn.
Here, no objections or orders. This meeting is adjourned.
What was that?
So you're just gonna take a three-minute pause so that the technology can reboot.
Recording stopped.
Well, can I have three minutes? So, that's, that's... So, this meeting about arbitration should be a little different. This meeting about arbitration, arbitration, we had a few, um, like a while ago. However, did we all get to speak, how do you... Um, you got a car, big brother?
Nah, unfortunately.
What, what do you do?
Uh, so I'm organizing a community center.
Where?
Chicago Liberation Center.
Where's this located?
Little Village.
Okay, Wes.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Having, uh, if you, you on Instagram?
Um, um...
If you look in Chicago Liberation Center, you'll find that.
Okay, Chicago Liberation. Eno Brown.
What's your name?
Taiwan Sims.
Taiwan Sims?
Taiwan Sims, S-I-M-S.
Got you.
Yeah, thank you. So, and the transparency in the police for us, with us. Right now, I'm, I'm endorsing Larry Snell because of what I see in him. Will he have the gun? Can one man reform a, a system? No, so I'm not gonna put the weight of that on him. However, with... With assistance.
Recording in progress.
True, with assistance, with the fact that, um, if we come around this, truly come around this, not, 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 not on those sideways, not the halfway. I'm endorsing Larry Snell for the fact that watching him speak, seeing how they, seeing how they respond to him, seeing... I understand that this individ, he is, he is an individual. Stands always. Hearing these people speak is important. There is a lot of ground to cover. However, we're not in this room. We not in this room, y'all. We not in this room, y'all.
Please hit refresh and log in to city council.
We're not in this room. And this argument is in our community and about our community. Laquan McDonald, all these people that they spoke about, those people weren't white. It's the young, the young Latino brother who got shot was another, these, these instances that happen, that take place. It can't be this way. It can't be this way. So we have to, we have to be willing to stand in. If you're not standing in, if you're not standing in and standing up, what you doing? I'm, I'm grateful to be here right now. I am more than grateful to be here right now. I am. However, it's... It's not enough. It's not enough. The people who even speak, it's not enough. Some of these people, they speak with swelling words because of their actions, their true actions. It's not enough. And they have surrounded themselves with good people. So it masks their true intentions. And it's horrible because we reach out to these people. We go to these people. We start to believe that these people are with us and they, they, they have our better interests at heart when they don't. They have personal interests and personal gain and personal accolades that they have set up for themselves. But they, not for the whole of it. While this arbitration that they, that they're talking about, it puts us at a disadvantage. It puts the community at a disadvantage. It puts the people at a disadvantage. It does not aid the people, it hinders the people. So this is where we at. And it's horrible. But these, 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 that, all these different things that's been, these positions.
When the quorum is called and the mayor gavel is in, it will pop up to vote and you are in the right street. Just make sure you're in the new meeting. Just make sure you're in the new meeting and it will pop up when the gavel is in.
We see all these different representations. All this, this is madness, this... Fuck this, this is madness. Where y'all at, black people? Where we at? I'm dead ass. This, this meeting is about us. Where we at? Look. You think they finna vote against arbitration? Look. And we, we gotta quit playing, gotta quit playing. Look, where black people at? Better quit playing, look. Look. Representation is a motherfucker and y'all don't get it. And if you got nobody representing you but a bunch of people that shouldn't be representing you, a bunch of cock-eating motherfuckers who shouldn't be representing you, then we in a bad place. If you ain't got no power on that other side of them, on the other side of them seats, we in a fucked up position. And I'm not gonna talk to you like, um, I had to talk like a newscaster. I'm gonna tell you heads up. If these, look. If these, those people that's the same color as us right there ain't thinking as hardcore as you, then we fucked. And they not. And the rest of these people could give a, a fuck less. Look. I was like, oh, he's cussing, he's cussing, he cusses a lot. Uh, yeah, I do. Because you know what? It's upsetting to realize, when you realize what a representation, where y'all at, black people? Black people, where y'all at? Black people, where y'all at? Because this meeting is actually about us. It's not about nobody else but us. So where we at? Where we at? You think these people finna vote against arbitration? You think they finna vote against putting their foot in black people's ass? Gotta be out their mind. It's been a system of things since it started. So we have to vote against it. Simple. You don't, nobody argues for you better than yourself. Nobody stands up for you like you gonna stand up for you. Nobody. A lot of these people, they got these positions. They feel like they done, they, they done set them, said, no. We got this man standing in the podium for us. We voted this guy in for us. Like, look. Look, we voted this guy in. We voted Brandon Johnson in. Oh. We voted, we voted Brandon Johnson in. We voted him in. We was like, hey, you know what? We gonna vote him in over what's his name? What was the white guy's name?
Alderman Robinson. Not present, Alderman Hall. Alderman Hall is present, Alderman Harris. Not present, Alderman Mosley. Not present, Alderman Rodriguez. Alderman Rodriguez is present, Alderman Scott. Not present, Alderman Cecil Lopez. Alderman Cecil Lopez is present, Alderman Waggins Pass. Up, present. Alderman, Alder Person Rodriguez Sanchez. Alder Person, not present. Alder Person Lawson. Not present, Alder Dawson, not present. Alder Person Haddin, not present. The mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. There are forty-two members present. We do have a quorum. There are a number of... There are a number of members who are in question for participating in today's meeting who were only re-sustained by Rule fifty-nine. Alders Robinson, Harris, Mosley, Scott, Rodriguez Sanchez, Lawson, and Haddin. Sorry, okay? With the exception of Alderman Lawson. So Robinson, Harris, Mosley, Scott, Rodriguez Sanchez, and Haddin. Can I get a motion to approve their remote participation? It's been moved so that they can be added to the quorum.
Why?
Thank you very much. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Any opposed signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Any pin of the chair, the ayes have it. Madam Clerk, please mark the various Alders participating remotely as present on the quorum call. Let's stand, please, for the pleasurable reason.
So what Maria Haddin at? Why, why she get the what's called, um, not be here? What you doing?
Please remain standing for the invocation which will be delivered by Alderman David Moore.
Thank you, everybody. Hands, please. First of all, as we step to give our own grace, I ask that you first forgive us our sins and our shortcomings and look beyond our faults and see our needs, O Lord.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, in earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. And forgive us our debt, as forgive our debt towards us. He that is not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thou is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
I ask that you cover each and every Alderman in this council, O Lord. Cover their families, O Lord. Give them a peace of mind where they can make the right choices for their communities, O Lord. I ask that you put a hedge of protection around our bear, O Lord, and give him direction, O Lord, that he listen to you first before anyone else in his decision-making, O Lord. So as we come before this body, O Lord, we want to make sure that we're listening to the residents of this great city, O Lord, and that we provide the services, the resources, and the policies that they want to see. In my name, Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. You may be seated. This is the portion of the meeting for public comments.
Oh, yes, I wanna, I wanna focus on comment. Can I?
The council now to give the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of thirty minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Any written comments that have been submitted will be posted and made available for automatic review. Our first speaker today is Alon Majano.
Yeah, I wanna speak, but I don't, I didn't know that we was both gonna sign up for it. Okay, so unfortunately, we gonna be able to sign up today. The public comment, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be outside there. Okay, well, I'm glad you know. Thank you, Alon, thank you. You can have a seat.
I am, I'm gonna sit, I'm gonna sit down. Stop it.
Have a seat, son.
I am.
Thank you.
I'm gonna sit down. I am, I am. That I'm gonna do. Stop that, please.
She was an instrumental part, she was a leader. Danny Shasta was here today. Uh, Shasta would be up here speaking and also adding her voice to the chorus, uh, demanding that city council vote to oppose arbitration. And so I'm here, I'm here on behalf of Shasta.
Fuckers, you come, keep harassing me, cocky motherfucker.
You know, telling city council, oppose arbitration. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is John Cantazera.
I'm gonna talk super fast because I got a lot more than three minutes to say. But I wanna start with pointing out, you see all the empty chairs here? They all got your marching order. They all got up and walked off because they didn't wanna hear me speak because they knew I was speaking at this, that's pretty disgusting transparency and democracy. But that's just what you turned this chamber into, us versus that mentality. But let me educate some of you Aldermen from fifty thousand-foot view of what arbitration is and how we got here today. Because I think at least ten of you are what's gonna decide this decision, one way or the other. Arbitration, and this body, this city of Chicago, was the one who helped pick Ed Ben as an arbitrator. Interest arbitration was granted to police and fire in lieu of the ability to strike. The process is very simple. Because the previous administration refused to negotiate a full contract, we were forced to break it up in two segments. That second segment was never done under Lightfoot and it certainly wasn't getting any movement here. So we were forced to vote arbitration. The, the list of arbitrators is seventy. The city got to strike three arbitrators from that list. We got to strike three. Ed Ben was the last man standing. They knew Ed Ben's position on arbitration for termination cases was rock solid. He had done it several times in different jurisdictions over many years. So if they were so hell-bent on this not becoming reality, then the city should have struck Ed Ben from ever being one of the arbitrators possible. But they didn't. So they are as culpable as anybody when Ed Ben makes this decision. Ed Ben's decision, I will remind you, is grounded in forty-five years of legal expertise in labor law. This is all about law. There's a lot of emotion about police conduct, about police murders. Again, murders are adjudicated in a criminal court. This is about discipline. The police board, there's a lot of fallacies also about transparency. The police board deliberates in closed session. You had the new president of the police board standing here last month telling you about the difference in now as opposed to in the past, about how officers are basically getting exonerated because they knew this was coming down. They knew their days were numbered about having the sole authority about deciding these cases. So they started being more fair. But I'll just leave you the simple caveat of why we're here today with this proposal specifically. We had the ability to opt out of this agreement, which is what we did. But when you go to twenty-sixth and Cal, any murder, a detective who investigates a murder is put on the stand and have to answer for their investigation on why they did something or why they didn't do something. Our members have never had that ability at the police board to bring in a cop investigator or internal affairs investigator to put him in a witness chair to testify on why they did something or why they didn't. The hearing officer has every single time refused that motion, period. That is not transparency. That is not a fair process. That is all we have ever asked for. You do have a legal obligation to, uh, the law. If you don't like the law, you don't get to say, I don't like the law, I'm gonna ignore it. You have to go and change it in Springfield. We're willing to have that point too if you want. But do your duty, do your oath to uphold the elementary constitution, and labor law is part of that law and constitution. If you vote no, you worry about the squeaky wheels? We'll be coming for your chairs.
Our next speaker is Neil Wrightsaw.
Y'all's got this, comments, thank you.
Hello. Thank you for letting us speak here. I'm with the industrial workers of the world. That is a revolutionary industrial union. We're associated with Antifa. So we oppose those fascists on the Chicago police force too. too. We believe in organizing the unorganized. An injury to one is an injury to all. All working class people need to stick together. Uh, I don't think you're gonna find very many labor unions that believe a police labor union is rigged. It's absurd concept. Uh, none of the labor union organizers really consider the police union to be valid. The whole idea of the police in the first place, they're union busters and slave catchers. That's the history of the police in this country.
All I'm gonna say is...
So to think that a, a labor union of police officers could be part of the working-class movement is just an obscenity. The function of the police is to serve and protect the one percent. Our union urges people to vote no on the closed-door arbitration. There's nothing just about it. Working-class people stick together. Remember where you came from, work representatives here.
Our next speaker is John Johnson.
Nothing but the Darwin Pony Show. I just love his show. Nothing but the Darwin Pony Show.
I'm John Johnson. I have a simple idea, it's very easy. I have a very simple idea, it was very easy, and I do believe it will save some lives. The idea is to fight against fear in this way. Anything electronic can be traced. So if you call nine-one-one, it can be traced. You call three-one-one, it can be traced. Not the postal office, have a lockbox at City Hall on the floor without a camera, where if someone has, uh, knowledge of a crime, where someone knows the name of someone that has killed someone, they can drop that note in the box, don't do not sign without fear of retaliation. Because to tell the people, go to somebody's door and say, "Well, who did it?", that's a little ridiculous because people want to live too. So have a dropbox somewhere in City Hall, not on the first floor, this is why I see them walking in, and not in the neighborhoods. Have a dropbox, they can come right there, right down the main, not on the street. Put it in the box and go about their business without fear of retaliation. The reason why so many people can do what they do, they're not worried about retaliation. No one's gonna say anything. Now, I don't blame them, you know, we all like a little... But the thing is, things have to change. Chicago is getting more crowded now, and we gonna need someone to put stuff in that dropbox. Thank you, that's all I need.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Anthony Prewood.
Good afternoon, distinguished members of the council as well as Mayor Johnson. Uh, this is my first time here, um, so I pray that the words that come to my mouth, those have been acknowledged. The great words of Frederick Douglass, the father of the Negro American freedom movement, once saying that there is no struggle, there is no progress. Power conceives nothing without demand. A little more hard than I am out, the God people are more mountain, be afraid and bear your prey. Dr. King once said, "We must work to assert our demand by means of the ballot, by admonishing them, by the power of love and wisdom will always, always overcome the self-destructiveness of hate and undying values." We do not need to hate while we figure this out. We don't. Someone has to have the sense enough to meet hate with love. So many doors close in our face, and what we say, the problem can't be solved, right? But, well, I'm here to tell you, we solve more complicated math equations. Hate can be solved, however, the table needs more seats for the voiceless to be heard, especially the youth. I currently have a child who unfortunately does not attend CPS. He's out of private school, where he and my wife are now experiencing racial and social economic biases, and it seems to be a problem when a man with a year-long tan speaks his mind and ever so eloquently, my voice is being pushed down. I told this gentleman, I saw my mother get raped, you know, I was four years old, by the police officer. I said, "Sir, can you tell me sorry?" He said, "Well, I can do that, well, you're the head of it." I'm the head of my family. And the head of this world, with God. And God sees all, but the devil doesn't see us. I vote no. Because we need to have transparency. This is America, let's not forget with the Constitution, the Declaration of Independence. These are words that were written hundreds of years ago, because my people have been enslaved for over two-hundred and twenty-four years. Now, we have a problem because a lot of people are getting paid under the table. Come on!
Say that.
Well, let's go ahead and get rid of that table. We need equality, not just for some, but for all.
Say that.
Because guess what? It's just gonna get worse, because this city is the center of the world. We got everything we need right here, and it's getting crowded, and guess what? The next time here is gonna get even more crowded. What are we gonna do? Our judgment takes us just, oh, Roosevelt, I gotta look up on some concrete laws. Oh, my. What happened to that law there? That's a big lawsuit. So let's make sure that we go arm-in-arm and work together. Now, Mayor Johnson, I'm still from the West Side, let's not forget where we're from. I'm from Chicago. I was born in heaven, but I'm lazy in Chicago.
People should live in the community where they're working.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council, members of the FOP.
They not gonna hire people in the community.
My name is David Melton. I'm also a member of the Coalition for Police Accountability and Transparency, as well as co-chair of Chicago Council of Lawyers and Liberation Communities. I want to thank you again for your prior votes rejecting the arbitrated decision, which ironically held in serious cases could be submitted to arbitration, and to ask that you again reject the arbitrated motion to adjourn decisions January fourth for the same effect. The arbitrated decision is wrong. It fails to give proper weight to the public interest and public safety in seeing that sufficient processes are in place to assure that bad officers are removed from the police force when they abuse their powers. It also fails to give proper weight to the public's financial interests in seeing that the few bad officers are removed from the police force. Reporting by WPTW last month documents that a relatively small number of bad officers cost the city an average of one million dollars every three days.
Oh, my goodness.
As a result of their misconduct. Finally, the arbitrated decision fails to give any consideration for the possibility of enhanced processes in arbitration, such as those employed by Chicago Police Board, rather than the closed processes associated with private arbitration. The decision is striking in its arrogance and suggestion to public officials violate their open office by daring to disagree with the arbitrator's opinions. It also degrades our coalition members by accusing us of telling a big lie and stating that private arbitration is conducted behind closed doors, even though the same arbitrator has admitted elsewhere that that is in fact the case. Decision is also inaccurate, considering excessive damages if it continues to disagree with the arbitrator, and has the temerity to challenge that ruling in court. Arbitrator knows that the cost of any subsequent engagement pales in comparison to the amount the city is forced to pay every three days on average for serious police misconduct. Overturning the arbitrated decision is not guaranteed in litigation, that's true, but it is far from a hopeless cause that some have suggested. Courts in two other jurisdictions have already rejected similar efforts by police unions in those states to move serious police misconduct cases behind closed doors. The decision here will involve a new constitutional provision that no Illinois court has yet had an opportunity to opine upon, and it involves serious public interest. It surely worth the cost of the fight. For all those reasons, we again urge you to reject the arbitrator's erroneous opinion and open the way to a court challenge of that opinion. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is David Orlikov.
Thank you. Uh, hello, I'm David Orlikov, a lifelong Chicagoan living on the North West Side. Um, last year, residents elected me to the Fourteenth District Council to fight for police accountability, for sort of justice, and evidence-based approaches to community safety. Forty-one district councillors representing millions of Chicagoans are demanding that city council again vote no on the arbitrated proposal, granting CPD officers the ability to get around the police board. It is appalling that right after we've had this historic election, giving people the most voice over safety in their communities, the fraternal ordered police, um, is launching this anti-democratic campaign to end transparency and accountability and make themselves above the law. There has been a lot of misinformation thrown around by the FOP and certain members of city council. These are the five facts on police arbitration. Number one, this ruling is a conflict of interest wherein arbitrator Edmund Benn is seeking to give himself more business to decide police misconduct cases. Number two, this FOP arbitration decision is unconstitutional at face and violates our federally mandated rights. We've heard from the unaccountable arbitrator Edmund Benn that Illinois state law is more important than Chicago. Well, the Constitution, Bill of Rights, and Civil Rights Act are all more important than the Illinois state law, and Benn is no judge. We've already seen these federal statutes successfully used in court to overturn our local rule on public safety whenever we fall short in the consent decree and numerous other lawsuits like for millions of racially discriminatory pretextual traffic stops ongoing. Number three, we pay billions of dollars for police misconduct settlements raising our taxes and rents. Number four, arbitrators don't live here and have no responsibility to the city or the people. They are selected by the representatives of police bound to have committed severe crimes and misconduct. That's why they already reduce or eliminate punishment for police misconduct seventy-eight percent of the time according to these Chicago Office of Inspector General. Number five, our police must follow the laws set by those elected by the people. If they are doing nothing wrong, then they'll have nothing to hide. No one in this city or state has the power to take away our constitutionally mandated and federally guaranteed rights. Private arbitration will systematically undermine our basic rights that are protected, um, that protect police officers who have no regard to the law. Um, the people of Chicago demand transparency and accountability. City council, this is your chance to stand with the people on the right side of history and the law. Anyone voting for FOP abuse today will be held responsible for the rise in taxes and rents tomorrow when the superintendent is unable to fire the worst cops on the force who repeatedly commit abuse. Vote for accountability and against arbitration. Thank you very much.
Hello, everyone, this is actually Jax Smith on with Chicago Nights. Everybody has spoken and, and basically has voiced their opinions and tried to get the Aldermen to vote no. It's beyond me that we have to even go through a second vote when they already voted no to arbitration the first time. But we are here, and I just wanna make it clear. This is what's going on right now has not been publicized, and no, you don't see the mass numbers. But if it don't go our way, we are fighting day in, day out, for everybody to be transparent, everybody to be held accountable for their misconduct. A lot of these laws that we face right now to this day were nothing to do for us, our people at all, and we're fighting.
Save black people.
Enough is enough. So I'm telling you guys, that whether you vote our way or you don't, we gonna continue to fight, and these numbers are running through us, and that's a fact. And he made it about a labor law. Labor law that protects, y'all heard it many times again, murders. I'm dealing with wrongly convicted people, tortured survivors by the hands of these cops. I was luckily, by the grace of God, was able to expose Brian P. Forberg on the news, that book enforced him, who had to be retired. Had he not made the news, he is still be one of the highest-paid sergeants on the force right now. Has he been charged for his crimes of having over twenty million wrongly convicted still suffering under arrest? No. He gets to go away with all his nice penance and collect his full pension, for now. We have to go day in and day out and fight a system, a system where we have people who has the voices to stand by us now. So I'm telling you guys, the best, that, your best bet is to stand with us and not against us, because the mass numbers are to the back, and people in that family are tired of taking these beatings and whupping and, and judging by the hands of people that voted to take and serve us and that we vote in. So I'm, I'm just giving fair notice and warning that it's either gonna go the right way or it's gonna be wrong, and you guys wanna regret making the wrong decision.
Say that, say that! Say that! They they motherfucking ass fuck these people. Yeah, y'all smile and do all that right now to the black people in this bitch. Let's go.
Our next speaker is Sam.
Coming over to a black, to support these black people, it's not gonna work.
Thank you for the opportunity to finish my sentiments. Um, this is regarding the, uh, drug encampment on Clinton and Lake and Fulton Streets. The city's policy of forcing the now sunsetted Bryant Agreement to protect the rights of the unhoused has converted to a barrier of the removal of drug, the drug encampment from the public way. These tent encampments have been largely commandeered by those dealers who have a vested interest in keeping these encampments in place as a thriving market for narcotics, which are currently under the protection of the city. This approach allows predatory criminal abuse by unhoused population at this location, which now poses a real danger to our neighborhood. When will the city acknowledge that its current plan to policy protecting the unhoused is in fact leading to an environment where good intent is being hijacked by criminal elements that endanger those homeless as well as law-abiding residents in this neighborhood? We implore the mayor's office to implement immediate measures to address the drug epidemic plaguing our neighborhood. This includes incessant police presence, unannounced drug inspections with K-9 units, the development of alternate shelter solutions that prioritize both public safety and the well-being of those in need. Additionally, bi-weekly pressure washing cleaning of the sidewalks to mitigate the unsanitary conditions caused by human waste is imperative. We believe these requests are not only reasonable but necessary for the safety and livelihood of our community. The cost of inaction far outweighs the investment required to implement these measures. We cannot afford to wait any longer for change. Thank you for your attention to this urgent matter. We eagerly await your response and hope to see you soon.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Y'all think they voting against arbitration? Y'all think they voting against arbitration?
My name is Sam Alarza, the U.S. Palestinian Community Network and the Arab-American Action Network. First, I'd like to say, thank you to the city council members who voted yes on the ceasefire resolution, and thank you to the mayor for breaking the tie. We know that Chris Jones and the Tribune editorial board and even the governor went after you. It wasn't easy. We thank and commend you all for your courage. I'm here today to encourage Aldermen in this chamber to vote no on arbitration. The city of Chicago voted for a better police accountability,法律 and process last year.
What is Maria's vote?
The city of Chicago must move forward and must set an example for this entire country and entire world. We cannot take ten steps backwards as a city and allow the FOP and its openly Trump-supporting racist president to influence our democratic decisions. He and his FOP cabal don't care about black, Latino, Arab, and other people of color in this city. We know what he is and what he represents. Because we were standing downstairs with him in the speakers' line, where he was doing the same racism that he spews in the press all the time. But this time, he was doing it in front of his life leaders of the Chicago Alliance, including one who has been wrongly convicted after he was brutally tortured by Chicago cops. Hey, Ray, you wanna hear the quote? That torture happened behind closed doors and led to the conviction. What happened was racist and illegal and took years from a brother's life. Voting no on arbitration will make sure that police crimes aren't swept under the rug, that police crimes don't continue to secretly devastate life and ground communities in Chicago. As a representative of two important Arab and Palestinian organizations here in Chicago and a proud member of the Chicago Lions, I ask that you vote no on arbitration. Thank you all for your time.
Your honor, there are no further speakers, so it's time to sign off the public comment. Thank you very much. This concludes the public comment period. For resolutions, we do not have any. Next up, communications. Next up, communications.
I, City Clerk Lindsey, inform the city council that all those matters considered by the city council regular meeting held on January twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four, required by statute to be published in a book or pamphlet form or on a more newspaper, are published in a pamphlet form on February fifteenth, twenty-twenty-twenty-four, by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies to the Journal of Proceedings, City Council State of Chicago. I, City Clerk Lindsey, also inform the city council that all those matters considered by the city council regular meeting held on January first, thirty, January thirty-first, twenty-four, which is required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form.
So if they vote arbitration, for arbitration, what they do is quietly get to sit behind, close doors after they fuck over black communities.
I, City Clerk Lindsey, also inform the city council that all those matters considered by the city council regular meeting held on January first, thirty, January thirty-first, twenty-four, which is required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form.
And do whatever they want, and it's enough, just like their sister said, but we not in the room. You see? You see who in the room? Look at these people in the room. It's not us in the room, and if we in the room, many of us stand for whatever else. We did, so we, 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 we won't. So even this. But we voted for Brandon Johnson. Maria Haddon, I wanna know what her vote is. Rogers Park, older woman, Maria Haddon, you should be in this meeting. I see you up there online, but you should be here.
Mr. President, could you ask alderman?
Mitchell, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mitchell, thank you.
Mr. President, Chairman Harris received from the clerk a listing of items proposed for the agreed calendar consisting of congratulatory, commemorative, and memorial resolutions authored by aldermen, authored by several aldermen.
I move ahead to this district calendar. Thank you very much. Hearing no objections, so ordered. For new business, clerk will call the wars beginning with the first war.
Zoni amendments which are referred to the committee on zoning landmarks and building standards. Press regulations, press control signals.
People that's not here. We see our illustrious leader not here.
An exemption to fiscal barrier requirements for commercial private alley access for parking facilities which are referred to the committee on transportation and public way. Alderman Dowell has proposed orders for approvals of plan of brown bill by the main three subvention which is referred to the committee on transportation and public way. Alderman Robinson has proposed orders for a transfer of funds from the fourth ward wage account for the year twenty-twenty-four, which is referred to the committee on the budget and government operations. Alderman Robinson also has proposed orders for amendment of the MISC code, section seventeen dash six dash zero four zero three F, by prohibiting permits for intensive manufacturing and planned manufacturing district numbers eight and eleven, which is referred to the committee on zoning, landmarks, and building standards. Alderman Lopez and Alderman Silverstein have proposed resolution to call on Hamas leaders to recognize Geneva Convention Article Three and immediately and unconditionally release all living and deceased persons called hostage following the October seventh attack in Israel, which is referred to the committee on health and human relations. Alderman Lopez and Alderman Silverstein have proposed resolution to call on Hamas leaders to recognize Geneva Convention Article Three and immediately and unconditionally release all living and deceased persons called hostage following the October seventh attack in Israel, which is referred to the committee on health and human relations. Two committees have been called, the committee on health and the committee on rules. The amendments referred to the committee on committees of rules. Alderman. Alderman Lopez has proposed orders to congratulate Taiwanese president and vice president-elect on their election victory. This is referred to the committee on economic, capital, and technology investment. Alderman Moore has proposed order for the mayor to remove his decision regarding the sound thinking shot spotter, which is referred to the committee on police and fire. Alderman O'Shea has proposed orders for an honorary street designation as honorary Tom Papa Hopkins Way, which is referred to the committee on transportation and public way. Alderman DeBardis has proposed orders for amendment of the MISC code, section four dash six dash zero twenty-three, to disallow additional package with licenses on portions of West Sixty-third Street, which is referred to the committee on license and consumer protection. Alderman C. Lopez has proposed orders for vacation in the public way, the alley bounded by South Union Avenue, West Twenty-first Street, South Rubelet Street, and South Canal Court, which is referred to the committee on transportation and public way. Alderman Mette has proposed orders for amendment of the MISC code, section seventeen dash six dash zero four zero three F, by requiring special use approval for sports and recreation permits in specified use categories, which is referred to the committee on zoning, landmarks, and building standards. Alderman Irvin has proposed orders for amendment of the MISC code, chapter seven dash twenty-eight, by adding a new section, seven dash twenty-eight dash four four five, establishing reward program for information leading to conviction or finding of liabilities for illegal dumping, which is referred to the committee on budget and government operations. Alderman T. Fio has proposed orders for issues of permits for sign sign boards at sixty-seven thirteen West Chicago Avenue, which are referred to the committee on zoning, landmarks, and building standards. Alderman Waggas Pack has proposed orders for issues of permits for sign sign boards at nineteen sixteen North Alston Avenue, which is referred to the committee on zoning, landmarks, and building standards. Alderman Rodriguez, Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez has proposed orders for issues of permits for sign sign boards at thirty-seven thirty-seven West Morris Avenue, which is referred to the committee on zoning, landmarks, and building standards. Alderman DeAgus has proposed orders for an honorary street designation as honorary Fair Lawrence Thurler Way, which is referred to the committee on transportation and public way. Alderman Miss has proposed orders for amendment of the MISC code, section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three, to disallow additional package with licenses on portions of West North Avenue, which is referred to the committee on license and consumer protection. Alderman Nugent has proposed orders for amendment of the MISC code, section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-two, to allow additional alcoholic liquor licenses on portions of North Alston Avenue, which is referred to the committee on license and consumer protection. Alderman Lawson has proposed orders for amendment of the MISC code, section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-two, to allow additional alcoholic liquor licenses on portions of West Belmont Avenue, which is referred to the committee on license and consumer protection. Alderman Silverstein has proposed orders for amendment of the MISC code, section four dash sixty dash zero twenty-three, to allow additional package with licenses on portions of West Tuvia Avenue, which is referred to the committee on license and consumer protection. Alderman Riley has proposed orders for amendment of the MISC code, section three dash three three dash zero thirty, regarding tax imposed on real property, tax imposed on real property for transfer under one million dollars, which is referred to the committee on finance. Alderman Riley also has proposed order for amendment of the MISC code, section nine dash one oh eight dash zero eighty, regarding smart street pilot program execution date, which is referred to the committee on pedestrian and traffic safety. Your honor, that concludes the presentation of Alderman's introduction.
Thank you very much for the approval of the general, for the approval of journals. Alderman Mitchell.
Mr. President, I'm not aware of any correction to the journal on January twenty-fourth or January thirty-first meeting. Can move that day with the approval.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. For unfinished business, Alderman Mitchell.
I'm aware of one piece of unfinished business. It was filed by Alderman Yansey, cause for substitute orders two zero two four, dash zero 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 seven three three two, concerning the adoption of arbitration option concerning these disciplinary cases, which would prefer to be published on January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four.
Thank you very much. Chair recognizes Alderman Yansey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to defer to Chairman Rodriguez on this one.
Very well. Chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Alderman Yansey and President Johnson. As we all know now, this, excuse me, this is an ordinance implementing an arbitration option for Chicago Police Department disciplinary actions in excess of three hundred and sixty-five days and also separations. Under the pertinent collective bargaining agreement, this arbitration option will fail if it is rejected by three-fifths of the city council. I will urge my colleagues to vote no on this matter. Before we take the vote, I'd like to speak briefly on this item, and I request the right to close, Mr. President. Very well. As I noted previously, the city's chief labor negotiator has stated that this award, which gives officers a choice between arbitration and the police board, is not justified by the record of the party's history. It is likely to frustrate the city's efforts to bring about fundamental and necessary reforms in the police department. It will set public confidence in disciplinary process applicable to police officers, and it will ultimately work to the detriment of our officers covered by their CBA. At the bottom is inconsistent, and at the bottom, this is inconsistent with the interest and the welfare of the public, as required by the Illinois Public Labor Resolution Act. In addition, if this item goes into effect, it will mean the police department will be subjected to back pay to officers at the time they were out on leave awaiting a disciplinary decision, regardless of the end results of that disciplinary action. Furthermore, in this supplemental war, the arbitrator accuses members of this body of violating our oath of office. Merely because we disagree with his decision, members of this body are privileged and obligated to express our views on the concerns of the residents of the city of Chicago. We are accused of violating our oath simply because those views differ from the arbitrage. Our vote does not affirm his opinion. Under the pertinent CBA, this item will fail if it is affirmatively rejected by three-fifths of the city council. I therefore once again urge my colleagues to vote no on that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Chair recognizes Alderman David Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate Alderman Rodriguez's remarks, and thank you so much for that. I just want to stand up and say, as we deal with these situations, it's very important that we stay focused on what's going right for the city of Chicago. After this shot spotter situation, I got calls from people saying, you voted for this, you still with the mayor on this, you need to change your vote and stand with us because he's not standing with you. I don't play politics. I do what's right by the community, and that's why I'm still standing in support of and voting no on this one. But I want us always to make sure we do what's right, not what's politically convenient or who's dropping money in campaign coffers. Let's do what's right for the community, and that's why I'm standing, standing with the administration on this one. Thank you so much.
Say that.
Mr. President, nine months ago, we all stood on the page and swore oath before our friends, families, and supporters of us. In that oath, we swore to protect the constitutions of the United States and the state of Illinois. We had all heard the debate on this issue, but nothing gets around the fact, this fact, that the right to arbitration is as clear as day, and it is guaranteed by the state constitution via the Workers' Rights Amendment. Every single argument used to oppose arbitration is based on falsehood and political theater. To call this argument is giving them too much credit. Read the police board transcripts, and you will see that they are no more transparent than arbitration. Read the police general order, and you will see their use of force policy is more restricted than the general public. The same opponents who want to use tax dollars to gamble in losing hand in court are the same that are always pushing to settle misconduct cases and then explain about all who wasted tax dollars. Some of my colleagues have even bemoaned the ruling, stating that they felt it was undemocratic to not agree with this body. I want to address that. Democracies are empowered by the people to create laws, not break them. And today, we are not voting to create, we are voting to either acknowledge or betray the law and the rights it protects. I want to make this very clear, that it was the democratic process at work when the state drafted the Illinois Public Labor Relations Act forty years ago. It's illegal, illegal for us to break it today, and that's the difference. And it's all smoke and mirrors and emotional slogans to hide and confuse the fact that the law is the law, and it is clear what it says, arbitration shall prevail. And to my colleagues who have deep anger toward the police, all I can say to you, that your vote to deny arbitration is cutting off your nose to spite your face. You are not maintaining a clean political record with your vote. You are violating the law, your oath, and your responsibility to taxpayers. You are starting a process that will end with millions in settled in cash going into the pockets of police officers, even those who should be fired. Nobody in this chamber can claim ignorance to the fact that a vote against the right to arbitration is a vote against workers' rights. It's a cold hard fact that a vote against arbitration is a violation of our oath of office by knowingly breaking the state constitution. If you are comfortable with that vote, so be it. But you cannot just shrug your shoulders when asked to justify the wasting of millions in tax dollars on litigation and settlements for the lawful and wanted violation of the state constitution. This vote is not about police, it's about oath, and how much they are worth to you. No excuses, no pain, no spin, just back, and your vote will tell. Thank you.
I agree with all who have been speaking to this people. The chair recognizes Alderman Napolitan.
Thank you, Mr. President. The last five years, the last six years, we've noticed a movement, an anti-police movement. We see it throughout the city, and unfortunately, we see it here in the city council. Started four years ago, or I'm sorry, started six years ago, but it was really pushed about four years ago when they wanted to get rid of Shot Spotter and steal that, steal that contract and put it towards different pet projects. Now we're seeing another tool that we're losing throughout the city. That hurts the entire city. What you're also being told in here today is that when you vote today that this is a vote on a binding agreement with the CBA, and it'll be enacted, and it'll be in effect, and that it all goes away, that's a lie. Like my colleagues say, it's like arbitration will make the ruling in the end. This goes to the courts, and that will make the ruling in the end, and the city will lose, and once again, we will pay. For all of you that have come in this office or in this body over and over again and said that you made the best decision for the entire city of Chicago, not just for the point that's going on in the moment, and how to save the city some money, or to put your money where your mouth is, this is that moment, because this is going to cost the city a lot. And you're willing to take that risk. You're willing to take that risk for political purposes and for a general purpose. That is what's been going on in here for years now. This isn't a movement for what's right or what's wrong. This is a movement against the police, and it has been that way for years. If you want accountability, how come there isn't this frustration for accountability in neighborhoods that are seeing death, death tolls rise every single day? Death percentage, that issue is only put on the police. When you have an issue in your neighborhood, you don't call plumber. If you have a shooting, you're calling the police. Someone had brought up an incident that happened before that went to the courts and was settled on Officer Riambu. Of course, the whole story's not told, because it never is, of what happened on that day. And that officer went into a situation where him and his partner were attacked. No, no, that's, that's, that's what, that's what happened, is we were attacked with a baseball bat, and a situation rose where lethal force was used. And what had happened with an innocent life that was taken in that moment wasn't what Officer Riambu wanted, wasn't what his partner wanted, but that was the story that was told. And the best thing to do, or the best way that we thought we could do it, just fire him. All I constantly hear is, police are racist, police are racist, they're anti-black, they're anti-Hispanic.